October 27, 2025, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Executive session.
Ms. Octavie, this was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda for caucus.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda for caucus.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Taverneck. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Councilman Cunningham. We have online Councilman Dawson and Councilman Glover, correct?
Yes.
All right. We have no council member discussion. I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session for the following reasons. Under A, South Carolina Code Section 30-40-70A2, Discussion of Negotiations Incident to Propose Contractual Arrangements Incident to the Purchase of Real Property for the Right-of-Way Acquisition Purposes, Rebound Road, Port Royal, South Carolina area. B, under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2, Receipt of Legal Advice Where the Legal Advice Relates to Matters Covered by the Count Attorney-client Privilege Discussion Related to Privileged Communications by County Attorneys with Staff and Counsel. And C, under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2, Receipt of Legal Advice Where the Legal Advice Relates to Pending Litigation, James Ware versus Beaufort County, et al. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Vice Chairman Taverneck. And the motion was made by Councilman Cunningham. All in favor of going into executive session? Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. We're going to the room in the other -- and there may be matters arising out of executive session. Okay? Good?
Out of executive session, I'd like to make a motion on the first item as a matter of. I move that county council authorize the county administrator to enter into negotiations with property owners of certain parcels located along Rebaugh Road corridor in the town of Port Royal for the purpose of exploring potential acquisition opportunities. Any proposed purchase agreements shall be brought back to county council for consideration and approval. Do I have a second?
I will second that, Madam Chair, and also I'd like to say that York wanted to second that, but he's not online right now, so I'll make that for him.
All in favor, signal by, and that is unanimous by those of us here at the meeting. The second thing that we do have out of executive session, do I have a motion?
Yes, I will make that motion. That is regarding item number six C. I move that council authorize the county attorney and our outside counsel for the case of James Ware et al. versus Beaufort County to negotiate a settlement in accordance with the terms as discussed in executive session and that the county administrator be authorized to execute a settlement agreement for the terms as discussed in executive session.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Chairman Tavernick, all in favor, and that is unanimous. And we have another item out of executive session, a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. I move that council waive the attorney-client privilege for legal advice received in text messages, in email communications, or voicemails between June 2021 and August 2023 from our county attorneys and/or retained attorneys to county administration, council, or both, with the exception of, A, matters that involve currently active litigation, or matters that involve mediation or settlement negotiations.
Do we have a second?
As described in the attachment A, which will be provided to the clerk of council and to the county attorney, and that all these communications be provided to the South Carolina Law Enforcement Department pursuant to the subpoena dated May 22, 2025, and their renewed request in October 2025.
A second by Vice Chairman Tavernick, all in favor? Okay, all in, that was unanimous, thank you. There being no further matters of caucus, I'd like to adjourn caucus, and we are ready to go into our full meeting. Okay, thank you. All right.
Right back to it.
We got it, all right. All right, good evening. This is the regular council meeting of October 27th of County Council at the Bluffton Library. Please rise, and Tom Reitz will do our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Please bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be together in service to our county and its people. I pray that you guide us with wisdom to make decisions that are fair and just in consideration of all voices in our community, and that we work in a way that glorifies your holy son. In his name we pray, amen.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to confirm with Ms. Octavia that this was, meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Passment and a second by Councilman Cunningham, all in favor, and that is unanimous. We had two members of council on Zoom, but they're not avail, we're working on that, but we do have a majority at this time. I hope everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes. These are the minutes from a special call, county council meeting of October 6, and caucus and council meeting of October 13. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
This was a motion made by Councilman Passment.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilman Lawson. All in favor of approval of those minutes, by show of hands, and that is unanimous. Okay, we have several proclamations tonight, and we have a lot, we have some visitors, too. First one is presentation of a proclamation recognizing October 23 through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week, and David Bartholomew will read that proclamation.
Anybody here from the Young Marines?
I thought that might be you. How you doing?
I've got a red shirt on here. Good for you.
Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, and whereas October 23rd to 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim October 23rd to the 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Beaufort County and urge all citizens to join this special observance, dated this 27th day of October 2025, signed by Alice Howard.
Would you like to make any comments, or tell us your, okay.
So, hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm gonna set that down right here. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the Young Marines program and what we stand for. So the Young Marines program is a national nonprofit youth organization for ages eight through the completion of high school. It's kind of base similar to a JROTC that you would see in like your public schools, but we have values that focus on teamwork, leadership, and discipline. So as you progress in the ranks, you come to events and you receive proclamations like I'm doing here today to encourage a society. The program focuses on strengthening, ooh, excuse me, strengthening America's youth by providing them with information on, you know, the dangers of drugs in today's society. So proclamations like this from Beaufort County and stating that, hey, you know, these dates is Red Ribbon Week is really important, and I just would like to thank the council for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation regarding the 250th anniversary of the Navy, and Councilman Passment will do that. Do we have any members, I know we have one former member of the Navy.
Any member of the Navy here this evening? Come join me, Mr. Robinson.
Yep, we have two, Chuck and John. Anyone else in the audience? No?
Where fun. Absolutely. Thank you for your service. Whereas on October 13, 1775, the Second Continental Congress established the United States Navy, marking the birth of America's naval forces and the beginning of its fight to defend our nation's seas, and whereas for 250 years, the United States Navy has stood as one of the guardians for liberty, securing our nation, maintaining readiness, and protecting American interests in all seven continents, and whereas the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of our sailors and their families have ensured our waters stay defended, and no adversary can disrupt the prosperity of our nation and the freedoms we cherish, and whereas the United States Navy remains steadfast in its mission to serve and defend while building strong ties in local communities and fostering partnerships that strengthen the strong ties in local communities and fostering partnerships that strengthen the fabric of our great nation, and whereas the United States Navy hosts the strongest and most advanced navy in the world with a battle force of almost 300 ships, including 11 aircraft carriers hosting over 1,000 rotating aircraft, 71 nuclear subs, and a robust fleet of destroyers and cruisers to help defend America's interests foreign and abroad, and whereas Beaufort, with its proud tradition of service and its deep appreciation for those who serve, joins in honoring the United States Navy on its 250th anniversary, recognizing the enduring bond between the Navy and the communities it protects, and reaffirming our commitment to supporting soldiers, veterans, and their families for generations to come. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim the 13th day of October 2025 as the 250th anniversary of the United States Navy in Beaufort County, and urge all citizens to join in this special observance dated today and signed by our Chair, Alice Howard. Gentlemen, thank you for your service. Congratulations.
Oh, yes, please. Thank you. All right, next, we have, and we have a large group for this, presentation of a proclamation for Beaufort County Youth Conference Month. And Ms. Majors is leader, and this will be read by Ms. Taverneck.
Yeah, come on up, so that they can see you on TV. It's really great you all came all the way down here. That's great. Hello, Carrie. Happy to do this. Come on around, Okay, whereas, is this Carrie?
Carrie.
Carrie's. Whereas Carrie's Low Country Modeling, established in 1985, is the founding organization of the Beaufort County Youth Conference, and whereas the annual Beaufort County Youth Conference was formed under Carrie's Low Country Modeling in 1992, and whereas the purpose of the annual Beaufort County Youth Conference is to provide a platform for students in grade six or 12 to develop social skills and equip themselves to effectively deal with social problems that tend to derail and destroy the lives of our young people. And whereas the Beaufort County Youth Conference is held annually on the 4th Saturday in September, consistently since its inception in 1992, except for two out of the 33 years, I could guess one of them was COVID, yeah, and whereas the focus of the Beaufort County Youth Conference is to arm students with vital and life-saving social skills, information, and materials to help prevent shootings, underage drinking, premarital sex, and other acts of violence in communities, and whereas the efforts of the youth conference have been steadfast, relentless, and unwavering in providing this unique opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that the Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim, and I'm a little late, September 2025 as Beaufort County Youth Conference Month, and commend it to observance for all of our citizens dated today, Alice Howard, Chair. And let me say, as an educator for 37 years, this is a great thing to do, to train our youth. So, congrats. Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Come on in, speak.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Beaufort County Youth Conference, we are deeply honored for the recognition through this proclamation. It feels good to have our local leaders see the work that our youth are doing in our community. So, thank you again. I'm gonna let you hear from one of our ambassadors, but I just want to thank you for supporting our youth and seeing the work that we've done, and we are raising tomorrow's leaders. So, thank you for your support.
That's great. Ambassador, your name.
My name is Jasmine Smalls. I'm a Beaufort County Youth Conference Ambassador, and I would just like to say that it means so much that our group is being recognized by this proclamation. It means so much to us that this city is recognizing the voices and contributions made by the youth. We are committed to proving that the youth can be a powerful force of good in the community. We thank you for your encouragement, and we thank you for your support. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Come in front. I'm gonna go to the end, because you guys are more important.
Thank you for coming all the way from St. Helena to this meeting, too. A lot. Our last proclamation for tonight is proclamation for the Pan-African Family Empowerment and Land Preservation Network/ Help Save Gullah-Gi Chi Land Campaign Month, and this will be presented by Councilman Mark Larson.
Is somebody here for that?
Yes, I think so.
All right, I can ask Ms. Teresa White to come forward.
Come on up.
Just stand right here with me. Proclamation, whereas the Pan-African Family Empowerment and Land Preservation Network Incorporated, also known as PAFN, is an internationally-recognized nonprofit founded on August 28, 2013, by former journalist and congressional aide Teresa White of St. Helena Island, South Carolina, to empower people of the African descent to preserve ancestral land, strengthen families, and promote global Pan-African unity. And whereas, PAFN launched the Help Save Gullah-Gi Chi Land Campaign in March 2015 to protect Black-owned land in the federally-recognized Gullah-Gi Chi Cultural Corridor, and whereas the campaign celebrates the 10th anniversary in 2025, having helped save homes, land, and businesses valued at nearly $25 million across Beaufort, Berkeley, Charleston, Carlton, Horry, Georgetown, Jasper, and Williamsburgs Counties in South Carolina, and Chatham, Glen, McIntosh Counties in Georgia. And whereas, PAFN is identified in the 2040 Beaufort County Preservation Plan as a key partner in preserving rural landscapes and heirs' property, especially on St. Helena Island. And whereas, PAFN has brought national and international attention to Gullah-Gi Chi families who are land-rich but cash-poor, fighting to keep land purchased by formerly enslaved West African during the Civil War and the Reconstruction eras. And whereas, PAFN has prevented the loss of Gullah property in multiple Beaufort County communities, including Hilton Head Island, Defuski Island, Bluffton, Burton, Gray's Hill, Yemecee, Big Estate, Beaufort, Ladies Island, and St. Helena Island. And whereas, PAFN has led taxpayer empowerment workshops and other free educational events with numerous community nonprofit, county, state, and federal partners. And whereas, PAFN helps secure a statewide extension of property redemption deadlines during the COVID-19 pandemic, and has worked with partners to improve land use and tax payments options for Gullah-Gi Chi families. And whereas, PAFN has broadened its impact through outreach, supporting families of African descent in Liberia, Haiti, and throughout the Low Country. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council proclaims July 2025, again, we're a little late as well, as Pan-African Family Empowerment and Land Preservation Network Help Save Gullah-Gi Chi Land Campaign Month in Beaufort County, South Carolina, dated this 27th day of October 2025 by our Chair, Beaufort County, Alice Howard.
I'd just like to say that, on behalf of the Pan-African Family Empowerment and Land
Preservation Network, we are very happy that our 10-year project has done as much as it has to be able to save Gullah-Gi Chi-owned property, and that we look forward to possibly extending that 10-year project at the end of this year. And we appreciate the support that the community has given us, and this recognition from county council, and like others in our community, we have concerns about development in our area, but we also realize that without development, there won't be any place for us to live, no institutions for our children to learn, no place for us to go shopping, and other things, including multiple places for us to work. In the 94 years between the birth of my paternal grandfather and me, a lot of changes happened in America. Part of that process was making the transition from being somebody's property to becoming property owners, and that is what we work to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is public comment, and we have one person signed up, and it's Ms. Carrie Major. And I'm not gonna read, because you know the rules about public comment well.
You can tell us very well. Yes, my name is Carrie Major, and I'm just so glad to be here in Bluffton tonight, but as a reminder about our youth and community center on St. Helena Island, that's one of my assignments, along with our youth as well, to get something built for them on St. Helena Island that will be comparable to, we just took them to Buff Walter as well. So we want our youth to be able to grow strong in the area and have some things going on for them as well, a place to meet, as well as to have sports activities and other things as well. So we thank you, and we know Phase One is in the works. We're waiting to hear on St. Helena so that we can have that public meeting with everyone on St. Helena to see what's in store for us, and we look forward to not only Phase One, but Phase Two for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. Okay, moving on with our agenda, I have a list of different committees for our liaison reports. I'll start with, I'll start, Community Services have anything to report?
No, not from the Community Services Committee.
But you'll be meeting next, in a week, okay. Natural Resources, York's online, and they'll be meeting next week. Do we have anything from Finance, Mark?
Yes, we have two things on the consent agenda, and first of all, I want to thank Logan for handling that committee meeting. I think it's my first meeting I've missed in two, three, four years, I think, but I heard it was a fun one. But the two things that are on the consent agenda from the Finance and Administration Committee is approval for a contract for Trulock Construction for Road Culvert, and then also O'Quinn Marine Construction for the Melrose Dock Repair on Defuski.
Okay, Public Facilities, Logan?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yeah, we did have a meeting last week. We'll have another one next month. I believe it is the 17th of November, I believe is our next Public Facilities Committee meeting. Also, from Bluffton Fire, tomorrow they are meeting at 4:00. From my understanding, they're supposed to be finally narrowing down which candidate they are choosing to send forward to us, so if we can get that squared away before the end of this year.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Taverneck, would you like to report on the Economic Development Corporation, Beaufort County?
Sure. I attended the Economic Development Corporation meeting on October 16. There was a discussion of using site fund dollars to secure state matching funds for two parcels at the Beaufort City Commerce Park, and there was also a discussion of a tentative cultural center on Ladies Island, and the Beaufort Commerce Park was brought forward to Finance Committee, and the motion failed. The discussion of a cultural center on Ladies Island will be brought forward at the next meeting. I want to commend our Chair, October 15. We had State of the Region, over 500 people attended, several people on this dius. Governor McMaster was the primary speaker, but Ms. Howard spoke on behalf of the county what great things we're doing. It was to enlighten people how the county's moving forward. We had a chat with council, October 16, at Disabilities Center, and it was very lively. And we invite everybody to come to chat. Our next one's in November, it'll be, I believe, right here. And October 21, if you missed it, because I'm sure you might have been busy, you can watch it on BCTV. We had a county work session where Mr. Edmondson revealed we have over 500 properties the county owns. Some are rural and critical lands, some are underwater, I'm just gonna say that. And so we talked about, can we use some of these for housing or something else? We had that discussion. We also had our HR Director, Catherine Mead, talk about, we've looked at steps for increases and merit pay, and looking at our remote work policy. If you missed the meeting, it's on BCTV. It was October 21 workshop.
Thank you. Joe, did the Board of Assessment Appeals meet in this?
No.
Okay, but they have been doing, they've been doing some workshops, I think, throughout the county. And I'd like to report on Beaufort Memorial Hospital September meeting. Their regular meeting is also Wednesday morning. They have approved their budget. Last month was profitable, and they anticipate September will be too. The bed wait time is up, they're working on that in the emergency room, and they're working on patient satisfaction regarding the emergency room wait time. They've upgraded the nurse system so that nurses' badges correspond with the visits to the rooms. They're waiting for the winter COVID spike, possibly, but hoping that won't happen, and they're giving out advice on vaccinations. They're getting questions about that. They've increased mental health services, and the new operating suite is open at Beaufort Memorial Hospital. And the groundbreaking will be in December for the affordable housing in the Bluffton area for anyone who wants to come to that. Now officially the largest private employer in the county, and just want the public to be made aware of that. York, did you have anything to report from the Beaufort Jasper Sewer Water Authority? I don't, I don't think you did, okay. Going on to Gerald, would you like to report on what happened at the Locog meeting last week?
The Low Country Council of Government Board of Directors met last Thursday, and Ms. Graham, who's been the director for the past 12 years, is retiring at the end of the year, December 31. The Board of Directors gave a report that they are currently receiving resumes from candidates. They have received about 30 resumes. They are reviewing those resumes and interviewing candidates, and the board of directors, the executive committee has made it known that they will have a recommendation for the replacement of Ms. Sabrina Graham at our next regular scheduled meeting on December 11.
Okay, thank you. And David Bartholomew, there were several of us at the Northern Regional Plan Implementation Committee meeting on Friday, but if you could give a short report on that?
Yeah, a short report out of Nerfik. We had two great presentations. One of them was about the survey results from the plastic ordinance that may be moving forward here soon. Like I said, absolutely wonderful presentation, a lot of useful information on that front. And then we had another presentation update for the transportation, the Palmetto Breeze study that's been done. I think they have some wonderful plans that are gonna be coming forward. Hopefully, we can expand public transportation, especially north of the Broad. I think this is actually wonderful. And one other thing that's not on that list, the Beaufort Waterfront Advisory Committee, we met as well, and we finalized the survey that's gonna be going out to get public input about what the, what the use should be, what designs, features they would like, and how people use and interact with the waterfront parks. So I'm looking forward to getting that out, and I think it's gonna be open once it goes out for about 60 days or so to get some feedback.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. The two items that are on it is approval to award a contract to Trulock Construction for the Pawke Island Road Culvert Replacement Project. That's $2,207,789. And number two, a contract to O'Quinn Marine Construction for Melrose Dock Repair Project, which is $282,699.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Councilman Passment. And we have a second by Councilman Cunningham, all in favor of passing the consent agenda, and that is unanimous. and that is unanimous, okay. We have ordinances, I'll turn it over to Ms. Passamian.
So, yes, I'm going to say if everyone would like to leave before the ordinances, we understand. So I'll wait 30 seconds, yeah. No, you don't have to sneak out, go. We appreciate you coming, thank you for coming, we get it.
Thank you.
They have to go home and get ready for school tomorrow. Mm-hmm. Look at all their happy faces about school tomorrow, right? Yeah. She's laughing.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Safe drive up 170. I know. Okay, Ordinance 2025/46 is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of utility easement number 907041 for the right-of-way owned by Beaufort County known as Dolphin Watch Point located on Ladies Island. The vote at Public Facilities Committee meeting on September 15th was 7-0. The vote at our first reading and public hearing on October 13th was 10-0. Can I have a motion for this?
So moved.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Passamian and a second from Mr. Bartholomew. We've already discussed this, so if anyone on council have a comment or a question for Mr. Fralix, he's ready to roll. Okay, then I'll call for the vote on 2025/46. All in favor? All right, thank you so much. Ordinance 2025/47 is an ordinance to appropriate excess funds collected from the 2018 Transportation Sales Tax. The vote at Public Facilities Committee meeting September 15th was 7-0. The vote at first reading of public hearing on October 13th was 10-0. Can I have a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Passamian and Mr. Bartholomew, first and second. Jared, would you like to make some comments on this, because this is a topic the public's very interested in? Not that all of our topics aren't interesting, but this one's of particular interest. Mr. Fralix?
I hear you saying transportation's not always interesting. No, this one is of particular interest. This is our 2018 sales tax. Of course, this is in reference that we had a 2024 sales tax referendum that did not pass. We had some projects that needed to be reevaluated because we didn't have enough funding to cover those. Council did the hard work on that process in the spring and summer. They passed a Resolution 2546 that reprioritizes the projects and the funding associated with those projects. This ordinance is the mechanism that actual appropriates the funds to match the priorities that were approved in that resolution. So there was an over collection, we had $120 million program, we collected 145 million, 146 million, and we had previously allocated and appropriated 15 million of that over collection. So this is the balance, $11 million to be appropriated on the projects that were identified and prioritized in the resolution from July. So that's what we're doing with this ordinance.
Any comment or question from council? For the public, if you look in our packet at page 88, there's some specific information that we've gone through several times. Okay, I'd like to call for the vote, everyone, in favor of this ordinance. All right, thank you so much, it's unanimous. Ordinance 2025/48, an ordinance to appropriate $848,912 to St. James Baptist Church from the established project funds for the associated furniture and fixtures related to the overall project. The vote at Public Facilities Committee meeting September 15th was 7-0. The vote at first reading of council in public hearing October 13th was 10-0. Can I have a motion on this ordinance?
So moved. Motion, Chairman, Chairwoman?
How many people have you moved it? All right, Mr. Reitz will take the motion. Who would like to second it?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Passamian will second it. It's been duly motioned and seconded. I don't know if Jared, if you have anything to add. I know you had a meeting last week with the St. James Church Group.
Yeah, I can, I can kind of speak to that and what this is. So this ordinance is $850,000 to help the church with their furniture and fixtures so they can obtain and take care of that scope of the project work. This is all considered as part of the project cost. The county will be procuring the construction contract. We did have, we have a quarterly meeting with our advisory team, the town, the county, and the church, and we met last week. It was a positive meeting, a lot of good actions taking place, including this as a major action. So we're getting close to putting the actual construction contract out to bid in the coming weeks, either sometime around before or after Thanksgiving, with bids due back in hopefully the end of January. And with that, this will coincide with that work, and again, the goal will be to have the construction of the church with the procurement and construction of some of these items to all come together for a finished product.
When do you estimate the church might be constructed and opened for worship? Take a stab at it.
Right now, based off our discussion at our last meeting, is we're projecting it to be under construction in summer of next year, and we have an 18-month construction timeline, which would give us a fall or winter of '27.
Anyone on council question or comment?
I have a comment. When I got on council in 2015, the work had started on this even before then. I'd just like to say thank you to all the staff, hard work in the last two years, and also the two council members from Hilton Head to make this happen. This was a huge effort, and thank you.
Absolutely. We're not there yet, but we're getting closer.
Getting closer.
That's right. Thank you.
Anyone else comment?
Just one, I've been part of that now almost three years, and I will say, Jared, fantastic leadership on that, but to the Chairwoman's point, there's a lot of people involved with this, and it's been happening long before 2015. So shovel the ground next summer, but there's a lot of years that were put into it, and incredible work to be done, so thank you.
Any other comment or question from council? Maybe online? All right, I'd like to have a vote on this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Fralix. All in favor of Ordinance 2025/48? All right, we're unanimous, thank you. I have one ordinance for first reading. It is 2025/49, an ordinance to amend the business and professional licenses, Ordinance Chapter 18, Article 3, Section 18-67A-B, and Appendix A-B. The vote at Natural Resource Committee on October 6th was 7-0. Can I have a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Passamian makes a motion, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Howard makes a second, and you're up, Mr. Atkinson, and then I know there's comments and questions.
Thank you, and good evening. So the South Carolina Business License Tax Standardization Act requires that by December 31st of every odd year, the county must adopt by ordinance the latest standardization business license class schedule published by the IRS. In Appendix B of the subject to ordinance, there are six different industry sectors where the class has been modified, and at the bottom of that, it gives the date range for the statistical data that's used from the IRS. We're going from 23 to 25 in the class schedule, and it's a three-year average from 2019 to 2021. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any, yes, Mr. Bartholomew, I was ready for you.
Yeah, you know, I get what you're saying, we have to adopt this, and I don't mind, I guess, moving forward with it today, but in reading this, Section 10 in particular really bothers me, and I'll read it verbatim. "For the purpose of enforcing the provisions of this ordinance, the licensed official or other authorized agent of the county is empowered to enter upon the premises of any person subject to this ordinance to make inspections and to examine and audit books and records." And then it further states, "It shall be unlawful for any such person to fail or refuse to make available the necessary books and records." And when you, it keeps going, but when you put that in conjunction with Section 19, which it makes any violation punishable by jail of 30 days or $500 fine, I'm worried about that because I feel like that's a violation of the Constitution and the Fourth Amendment and the South Carolina Constitution. And I want to know how that plays into, I know the words here might not be what's equal to what you actually do in practice, but the language matters to me, and I just want to make sure that we're not violating people's constitutional rights.
Sure. So there are a few presuppositions to all of these ordinances. All constitutionally protected due process rights and the rights pertaining to and governing searches would certainly be, searches and seizures would certainly apply here. So that is a, you know, a presupposition where we are bound as enforcement agents to comply with the Constitution. Even though there's strong language like this that mirrors state-enabling legislation, it does not give us the ability to violate someone's constitutional rights. I will say that in Section 10, I think it's the third sentence, it says, "It shall be lawful for any person to fail or refuse to make available those necessary books." So anytime we have an enforcement action, the first thing that we do as government employees is we educate in any enforcement action. So we would educate and communicate with those folks, let them know what we need. 99, probably more than 99.9%, there's voluntary compliance, right? So under that, we would certainly not just go in and violate someone's rights. We have those governing, you know, rules that we all have those protections under the law, and we certainly would not violate them. As far as the ordinance itself, a business license tax, a privilege tax, is an option for the county. It's not something that's mandated. But it exists, that right to collect this tax under state law exists under enabling legislation. So if you're going to collect the tax, you have to do it in accordance and have an ordinance that matches and mirrors what the state law says that we have to have and do. Another example of that would be building codes. We cannot write our own building code, but we enforce building codes. Our ordinance mirrors, and all of the provisions that we enforce mirror what the state law says that we can do to enforce those building codes. But we do it, our folks are licensed through the state, and that's governed through the state, so we can't get creative, although there's very similar language that says we can enter on premises to do inspections and things of the like. So there is no overreach here. It's very rare that we would have to go in and audit someone. We collect their tax returns. So this would be a case where there is evidence, where there's some wrongdoing. We're not going to go in and go on missions snooping, looking for things. This is just a tool in the toolbox where if there is a, an outlying situation where it's needed, we have the tools that we need to do.
I understand that, and I personally just want to limit the tools in the toolbox that the government has. I want to make sure that we're in compliance with the constitutional protections. And the other thing is, can you tell me the enabling legislation? I want to make sure, I think it's referenced in a couple of different spots, but I want to make sure I'm reading the right stuff, because what I've been able to read so far, I don't see verbatim some of the language in there.
Sure. So it is the South Carolina Business License Tax Standardization Act, and I believe that's 2021, if I'm not mistaken.
Is that SE Code Section 61400, I believe?
It's the entire act.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there are subsections to that act, but, so they revamped it in 2021, and what they did is they standardized how you collect it and the provisions for collection statewide for all those who choose to collect the tax. So, but I will say, in recent, I got your email this afternoon with the proposed changes. Obviously, this has time restraints, what we're doing tonight. What I would recommend is that this come back to, your suggested changes come back to a committee for discussion, then the committee give direction to staff to research that. Let us go back to SEAC, the Municipal Association, and other players at the state to, to ensure that, you know, what's being asked for actually complies. Have our legal staff do a review and then come back and give you a report on that. There's no limit on when you can make edits to this ordinance, so if that's a separate process, that would probably be the best way to go about it, because if we don't pass this by our December meeting, we run afoul and we will be collecting incorrect amounts starting January 1st, and we certainly don't want to do that, so I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor, so any other comments or questions from council? Our guys online? Okay, then let's vote. All in favor of the ordinance as stated? And this is first reading, so it could go forward? All opposed? Two opposed, three opposed, okay. Mr. Atkinson made a suggestion, it goes back to committee.
No, he needs, it needs to go forward. We can work on it later.
Keep the timeline, yeah.
Yeah, keep the timeline.
But committee should discuss it, correct?
At some point.
At some point, but in 2026.
Sorry. The only thing that's on the floor tonight as part of the agenda is updating the schedule. That's it. The proposed amendments that were emailed out today, if those could come back and be discussed on an alternate track, because that's going to take longer than the next two council meetings to vet those out. If it goes to January, February, whatever it takes, we can work through that process, and staff is more than willing to work with council any way we need to, to get those vetted out. But this particular one, we just need passed by December so that we don't run afoul of state law with the fees that we're collecting.
Do I need, well, we voted, so we don't need a roll call. It's three against, okay. All right, Madam Chair, that's, that's the ordinances.
Okay, there being no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you.